All right, we are just coming out of an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property located at 64 Wildwood Street in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, and further to approve executive session minutes from June 14, 2021, June 14, 2021, June 28, 2021, September 27, 2021, in accordance with GL Chapter 30A, Section 22. And I shall now stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where your stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. First, on our agendas of transmitting of Treasury warrants, 36, 36A, 37, and 37A.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Kevin, okay, so moved. Great, thank you. We do not have any minutes to approve. We will go on to appointments. Our first one is Karen Levesque, Right-of-Way Manager Verizon regarding public hearing on request of Horizon New England, Inc., and Reading Municipal Light Department to relocate one pole on Hopkins Street. Sure. Do you want to read that?
So this is, just for the record, a public hearing is scheduled at the Town Hall, 121 Glenn Road, on Monday, March 14, 2022, at 7:00 PM on the application of Horizon New England, Inc., and Reading Municipal Light Department requesting permission to locate poles, wires, cables, fixtures, including the necessary anchors and guides and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along with and across the following public way or ways, and this is Hopkins Street, and it references the pole, P 6-23, on the southerly side of Hopkins Street, to a point approximately 25 feet southwesterly from its current location. So the first thing you want to do is entertain a motion.
Yeah, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We open the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, public hearing is now open. Let's see, sorry, I have my phone, okay. Few basic ground rules, comments are to be limited to the subject of the request. We will start with providing an opportunity for comments or a presentation from the applicant, followed by comments and recommendations from staff. We will then go to the board members for an opportunity to offer comments or ask questions, and then we will ask members of the audience if they have any questions or comments. I do ask that all comments and questions are directed through myself, the chair. Are you ready to present, sir? Can you just state your name?
Yes, my name is Bill Wallace, representing Verizon on this poll petition.
Thank you.
This poll petition is a request to relocate pole 6-23, approximately 25 feet on Hopkins Street. This will allow for the entrance to a new subdivision that's being built right there. That would be, I think it's Derby Lane.
Derby.
Derby Lane, so that the entrance can accommodate the traffic that will be there, and this pole will move outside of the street that's actually been, you know, kind of semi-paved there at the moment.
Okay. Do you have the certified receipts and green cards? Do we need that assistance? We don't need them.
I don't.
There aren't any for this, okay. Okay. Do you have any recommendations?
I do have a recommendation from the town engineer, Paula Looney. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the petition by Verizon to relocate utility pole on Hopkins Street in the vicinity of Highland Estates subdivision, aka Derby Lane. The pole relocation is necessary for construction of the new Highland Estates subdivision. DPW has no concerns regarding the specific request to relocate the aforementioned utility pole, as this item was reviewed during the definitive subdivision process, and thus the DPW recommends approval of the petition to relocate said pole accordingly. However, the board should be aware that Verizon elected to install the new utility pole in advance of filing this petition, and did so without filing a street opening permit with the Department of Public Works. The board may wish to inquire if this is common practice for Verizon in their contract, as the DPW hereby notifies the petitioner of the following, and it notes, "Street opening permit application must be filed with the DPW and approved prior to occupying a right-of-way open to the public use, such as Hopkins Street. A street opening permit application is available online." It's my understanding, it appears that Verizon recently started replacement of another utility pole, V 22, located just east of Highland Estates subdivision. Verizon installed a new utility pole while leaving an old utility pole in place while some equipment wires were seemingly awaiting transfer. DPW requests a schedule from Verizon to complete this work and ultimately remove this old pole. Far too often, the town is left with a condition of a new Verizon utility pole next to an old utility pole in what appears to be a partially completed replacement project. The DPW will be creating an inventory of all utility poles that appear to fall into this category. In these cases, the replacement project should be completed by Verizon or indicated otherwise to DPW by Verizon. DPW respectfully requests Verizon, please contact the Engineering Division to schedule a meeting to discuss this matter further, and the number is provided here, 978-658-4499. So that is the recommendation.
Is there a response?
Yes, I was just going to open it up to the board members. Go right ahead.
I just wanted to know, good evening, Mr. Wallace.
Good evening.
Didn't want to give you the opportunity to respond to that, perhaps?
Yeah, I know nothing behind, you know, the fact that I found out myself when I took a ride out there tonight that the pole had been placed. It looks like it might have been as part of, as mentioned, pole 22 is also being replaced. That's an in-spot location, so nothing before the board for that particular pole, and I don't know why that pole was placed. Typically, that is not the process. The process is to come here, unless it's an emergency basis, then they contact the town manager and work that out, but typically, the process is to come here, get the permit, do the work.
Thank you. Any further questions from Mr. Wallace? Kevin, do you have any questions, Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, just, yeah, just a disappointment that Verizon's not following the rules. And I don't understand that you actually found out after the fact, Mr. Wallace. Is your position that you would find out after?
I'm a contract person that Verizon hires to come out and attend these meetings for them. Sometimes I get the information, you know, a few days before. It gives me an opportunity to go by and look at it, but unfortunately, I got by there tonight, did not have a chance to get back to anybody in Verizon to find out why that pole had been placed.
Your position as a contract person, that's maybe your position with Verizon?
That's correct.
Are you a manager?
No, no, I'm a contract person. I used to be a manager for them many years ago.
So just to follow up and, I suppose, provide some clarification, it's my understanding that Paul Looney, the town engineer, has communicated with Karen Levesque, who is the Verizon Right-of-Way Manager, to convey that this pole has been located in advance of seeking approval. As I understand it in talking to Paul, she apologizes for the oversight, isn't sure why it happened, but, you know, presumably, the expectation is going to be that going forward, these requests get made before the work is done, and...
It sounds to me that this is pretty consistently done by Verizon, for whatever reason, and I don't understand why. Why they're not coming before and getting permitted correctly, why they feel that they just need to put the poles up and not take the old ones down.
So, Madam...
That's what it sounds like. It sounds like this is a repeat occurrence, that's what I'm saying. Is that about what I'm hearing, it sounds like?
I can't, I can't speak at the moment to the number of instances where this has happened in the past. I do know there have been instances where Verizon has made application, seeking a pole relocation prior to doing the work, but I don't know how frequent this kind of a circumstance is.
My experience is this is not a frequent situation. It's usually done in an emergency situation, for whatever reason, you know, I don't know on this particular case. I don't know when the pole was set. I obviously can find that out. As far as the other point that was made by the DPW engineer about double poles in that situation, that's separate, I believe, from this particular location. This location will have, has the new pole placed. The old pole will need to be removed before any surface work can be done in the road, so we won't end up with a double pole situation here. If there are outstanding double pole situations, I'll be glad to go back to Verizon and take the necessary contact information and make sure that that meeting does take place. That does...
I just recall one time that there was a pole issue, I think, on Salem Street, Anthony Street, and Paula Looney was gracious enough to go up there and meet with residents in that area, move the pole, just a little bit here, up there, you know, but none of this took place, and the residents didn't have that opportunity, it sounds like, that you just did put the pole in. So I just hope in the future, you do the right one, Kevin.
Yes.
So just on that point, fortunately, in the circumstance that you mentioned, Selectman Kyra, as it turned out, because the engineering had an opportunity to look at the situation prior to the, it coming to the Board of Selectmen, as it turns out, there was a water line that was in that area, and so the pole had to be moved to some measure. Fortunately, in this case, the Engineering Department did look at this before it came to this point, because they did that as part of the subdivision process, so subdivision approval, so there are no utilities that were, will be impacted by this pole relocation.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I obviously don't want to hold this up based on, well, one, that's already been, unfortunately, done without the permit, but I don't want this developer to be impacted by what's clearly a communication issue with Verizon, but perhaps when the exercise of finding out when the double pole, what the double poles list looks like, maybe we can reconvene with Paul and get suggestions from him as to potentially have this Verizon contact Karen in, or whoever is the appropriate person, to have a friendly discussion. I'm not saying it has to necessarily be a board agenda item, but if it does, so be it, such that, as a board member, if this continues, I won't be approving these applications coming forward until there's a meeting of the minds. I'm not going to hold this one up, but to some of the dialogue that's been conveyed, if they're not going to follow the process, and they frankly should know better. This isn't their first rodeo, and they're one of the two primary cable providers. They know they should be doing this, and they're doing it in other communities, so I don't really have a lot of tolerance for them not following the rules on this. So whatever the manager in conjunction hall thinks is appropriate, if they need to come before us, and Miss Levesque needs to find the time in her schedule to be here, no disrespect towards you, you seem like a lovely gentleman, but you're kind of, you're kind of on the raffle in terms of coming in here.
These meetings are requested in the past, and Verizon...
So, you know, but, you know, we certainly, we certainly have enough people paying Verizon bills in the community to warrant, you know, decision-makers to be in here, to make sure this is done right. So that would be my recommendation.
Any further discussion?
I just concur with Judy. I believe that what we should do is find out where all these double poles are, and have them in for a discussion, as she said. The rules are the rules. You're not following them, and we'd like to know why. Simple as that. Thank you.
Just, Madam Chair, I think in the memo from Paul, it references that the DPW is doing kind of an audit of that, and if we could just get a copy of the results when that's concluded, that'd be helpful.
Okay. Okay. If there's no more comments from the board, I'll open it up to any audience members that would like to make any comments. Okay, we have no comments from the audience, okay? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor? Okay, public hearing is now closed. I now entertain a motion to approve the request for the pole relocation, amend flammable license as presented.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Just want to make sure we're in the right...
Oh, did I do it wrong? I'm sorry. Oh, the flammable's the other one, I apologize. I'm going to amend that. It's, I, do I have a motion to approve the request for pole relocation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you. Can I just check that telephone number?
Yeah, of course.
Yes, 785-9499?
4499.
4499, thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to our second appointment, William Schneider, Operations Manager, Benevento Companies, regarding public hearing on request to amend flammable license for property located at 910 Salem Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yep, sorry, I have my notes on my phone here. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for purposes of considering a flammable license as described. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we open the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Okay, public session is now, public hearing is now open. I won't reiterate the same rules, just everything should come through the chair, but we'll start with Mr. Howle.
Again, this is a public hearing, it's been scheduled with the Board of Selectmen in room 9 at the Town Hall on Monday, March 14, 2022, at 7:10 PM on the application of Benevento Family Limited Partnership to increase the storage of flammables and combustible materials. Such material to be stored at the facility at 910 Salem Street, Wilmington, MAP R1, Parcel 28. A plot plan is made part of the application and may be viewed at the Town Manager's Office, 121 Glenn Road, Wilmington, Mass.
Okay, Mr. Schneider, you ready to present?
My name's William Schneider, I am the Operations Manager at Benevento Companies. I'm here to request that our flammable storage license be amended to increase the quantity of liquid asphalt that we can store on the site. Currently, we're permitted to store 80,000 gallons of liquid asphalt. I'd request that that quantity be increased to 110,000 gallons. The proposed 30,000 gallon tank is going to be welded steel, designed to the API Standard 650, which is the standard for oil storage tanks. The tank will have DEP-approved vapor condensers, electronic overflow prevention devices, and spring-loaded tank closure valves in the event of a power loss. It will be constructed on engineered concrete foundations with walled containment, designed to hold 110% of the capacity of the tank, and I've been in discussion with Chief Posey, Deputy Chief Posey, excuse me, Lieutenant Quigley, about the fire response for that site for several months, and they're quite satisfied with the progress we're making toward that end.
Great. Okay. Do you have any recommendations?
I do, just one question as to whether you have the certified cards from Butters? Oh, you do, okay, good. We do have a recommendation of approval from the Health Director and also from the Fire Chief.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board for any comments and questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, thank you for the presentation. I don't have objections, seeing that the Health Director and the Fire Department are comfortable. I just have rather a question, I'm looking at the map, could you just try to give me an idea of where on the property it'll be looking?
Yes, roughly, I believe you have the Dana Perkins map, DP's down on the right-hand corner.
Yep.
So you see those, you see the New England power line? There's two oval-shaped circles.
Okay.
It's down from that approximately 100 feet down toward the right.
So in the, is it, is it...
There's a, it should be...
Is it in red?
Yes, proposed asphalt tank location, yes, that's correct.
Thank you, sir.
I only have one question, and that is, this is an above-ground tank, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman O'Connell, do you have any comments? Selectman Kyra, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a, just a question maybe for Mr. Howle, actually, should, should our Conservation Director be approving this as well? Is this an issue for her to look at?
No, I don't think there's, there's any issue on the conservation side, there's no immediate wetlands in the area.
Okay, thank you.
All right. There's no further comment from the board, I'll open it up to the audience if there's any questions or comments.
Was this here brought in front of the town of North Reading, too?
Could you just...
They were notified at Butter, absolutely.
I just need you to state your name and address.
My name is John Shaw, I'm a, I bought a condo down at Pulte's, placed down...
What's the address?
100 Martin's Avenue.
Okay.
Right across the street from here, and...
Okay, you can continue with your question, thank you, sir.
And, oh, that's why, if the town of North Reading...
As soon as that, yes, there.
Because the only, only big guy was from the town. They were...
They were, they're on the Butter list, yeah.
Which they just notified us a few days ago, you know?
I can't speak to the timeline.
I don't know if it's, what you're going to say, but Benevento's and Lynch's, the state law, that you're not supposed to start work until 7:00, correct? That's the state law.
I don't know.
In other words, you're not supposed to start operations until 7:00. You're out there at 5, 6 o'clock in the morning dumping the, Lynch's dumping his trucks and so on and so forth. I don't know if this is...
Well, it's not pertinent to this particular, what we're talking about this evening. This is approval to have the flammable license. This isn't about their hours of operation, so we can't...
It's just been approved by the state also. Yes, the state fire marshal is part of the application process, absolutely.
In North Reading, I don't know if you've heard, but North Reading, excuse me, is on the, but they were notified. Yeah.
Because there was supposed to be more people here tonight. We're doing it right now. Does this have to be, you're going to pass it tonight?
It's, it's here for approval or not this evening, yes.
All right, so Benevento is in Wilmington, right?
Yes.
Okay, if there's any rack of noise down there, do we notify Wilmington Police or North Reading?
Well, I think the appropriate response would be notify Wilmington Police. In terms of your comment about the hours, I can't speak to whether state law establishes the 7:00 timeline or not, I, it's not something I know of specifically.
Because see, part of that project is built in Wilmington and North Reading.
Right.
Correct?
I think there is a portion of it in North Reading, I think the majority of it is in Wilmington, as I understand it.
Except for a question, it's...
Maybe it would be helpful if, for the gentleman, are you going to be going before the town of North Reading for a similar approval?
So I would just indicate that I think there's, there's really two distinctions here. The issue, it sounds like, is that you're concerned about is clearly the starting the operations before 7:00. That is really a separate issue from whether or not the modification of this flammables permit has merit. It's, my understanding, as was noted, that State Fire Marshal's office has approved this, our Fire Chief has recommended approval, so it, there's no basis to deny the modification of the flammables permit in terms of the requirements there. It's, I think the issue of the noise is, would need to be dealt with separately.
Oh, yeah, is there any safety devices if there's any problems?
Absolutely. There's overflow prevention on the tank, you can't overfill them, and there's spring-loaded positive, excuse me, positive closure valves, so if there's a power loss, while those valves are open, they shut.
Yes, Selectman Kyra.
Just a follow-up question to Mr. Benevento, I don't know that I heard an answer from the gentleman. He had mentioned that this tank is going to be partially in North Reading?
No, that's incorrect.
Partially in, partially in Wilmington?
No, that's not correct at all, it's entirely in Wilmington.
The, the tank is all in Wilmington?
That's correct.
Any further questions or comments?
What can I say? If you're saying that you're not going to beat city hall.
Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion, do you have a question?
No, no.
Okay, entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. The public hearing is now closed. I will now entertain a motion to approve request for, to amend the flammable license as presented. Do you have a motion? I have a motion to accept, do I have a second? Any further discussion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Show hands. Okay, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Madam Chair, yes, question?
Oh, I'm so sorry, sir, yes.
Who do we, do we have to notify the town of Wilmington, the police department?
If there's noise?
Down there?
Yes, you should call the police department and let them know.
Because see, as it is right now, the ones alongside us, a bunch of the parks...
Yep, I know where you...
...who are in the condos, moving, building.
Yep.
All right? Now, how come the town of North Reading does all the inspections instead of the construction works?
Madam Chair, if I can help, the, the reason why the town of North Reading would do the inspections is because Pulte Homes is building in North Reading, so any of your permitting and any of your construction-related permits would be under North Reading. So this business, the business that was just here before us, has part of their operation in Wilmington and part of their operation in North Reading. The reason why they're seeking this permit tonight was just to increase what they're storing on the Wilmington-based piece of land, so that's why they're coming before us. The noise piece, to be clear, no one on this board, you know, is working against people's quiet enjoyment at home. We were evaluating the storage tank capacity for asphalt only. I am speaking for myself, I'm sensitive to your concerns about noise. North Reading would have a noise ordinance policy on their books, and Wilmington has one as well. And so what I would suggest that you do is that you seek those answers through the Town Hall and the respective communities as to what their noise ordinance is. So you're sitting in North Reading, and you may be hearing noise that's occurring in Wilmington, so if you want to take up that noise issue, and it's happening in Wilmington, you have to speak to Wilmington-based people.
Okay, the issue which our condo is in Wilmington, is a high question.
So your address, you're, I'm not asking for your personal address, because I'm not trying to divulge that to the public, but do you have a Wilmington-based address, or are you a North Reading address? When you look at your checkbook, do you send a card out to a family member?
I pay taxes to North Reading.
So you pay to North Reading only, so you're a North Reading resident?
We should be paying it to Wilmington. We should be paying it to Wilmington, right?
So, so the other piece with that, too, is that I would suggest Dartmouth Group is your condo management company. And they're a large firm, and you may want to speak with the contact person that's assigned to your project as well, to share with them so you have a closed loop communication. Um, so that the Dartmouth Group is aware of it, and I assume you're not the only person in the condo complex that has similar concerns. So I would certainly encourage your neighbors to do the same, so that you can try and affect change. On for, the, the noise piece for Wilmington, you certainly could talk with town hall, and you certainly could engage with the Wilmington Police Department to express some concerns. And I'm sure, and I'm quite confident, they would look into that on your behalf.
Uh, just to be clear, though, Wilmington does, does not have a noise, uh, bylaw. There was, uh, an effort at a couple of town meetings ago to establish one, it did not prevail, so there is no noise bylaw. As to the question of when the business can begin operation, that's a separate question, as I said. I, I don't know whether state law, um, restricts that or not, that's, that would be something I'd have to look into.
Uh, can I, so, if you get the time, it's, um, over behind Verne Vettles, over at March Park, people is complaining. And they stopped, they stopped really at six, at six o'clock, they had started at seven. And then they, gradually years went by, they started back again, people hasn't complained, but the noise is, in the morning, is, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I would do, as Selectman O'Connell suggested, is definitely reach out to the Wilmington PD, they will definitely take a ride over and look into it. But I think her suggestion also to the Dartmouth Group, to yourself and, and other residents there, express your, you know, this pleasure with the noise, um.
Well, at present time right now.
Yeah.
Everybody's up and out against the Dartmouth, they're not doing their job.
Oh, okay. Another bet over there.
You also have construction happening on your own site.
Yeah.
Because you're still being built. So are they starting after seven on your site?
They were doing it, it was starting building, and then we started. And then now, he's starting a, a couple new buildings, so they're sneaking in there, it's not before, which they're not supposed to. Town Reading has been down there, it's stopped a few times, you know?
So there's a lot of moving parts going on, plus there's blasting.
Also on Sundays, on Sundays, it's in the work.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah, it's tough, for sure. But, yeah, I, I would recommend, you know, putting in those complaints for sure, you know? I think there's values for many people putting in the same plate, you know, so they look at it, you know?
Right, I, you know, I, I can't understand why Wilmington is not collecting taxes from, from, uh, over there.
That I don't know.
The building is in Wilmington, you know?
I, that would be something I'd have to ask the assessor's office. I, I would be very surprised, quite frankly, if a property is in another, is in Wilmington and we're not taxing it, I mean, that's.
Don't give us any ideas. Yeah, right.
You know what, Pete, I want you to believe, but now, how about shade? So, uh, concrete people. They say, they back right up to us. Now, that's Wilmington, and Lynch's in Wilmington, right?
Sometimes those property lines kind of, you know, I don't know how it goes, but thank you for your comments, we do have to move on to the agenda.
Okay.
Um, but we appreciate you coming down here tonight, because it, it matters, so, um, please do, you know, call in with noise complaints and, and, you know, we'll do what we can to help there. Yeah.
I believe, gentleman is a veteran, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate, we appreciate your service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Nineteen, nineteen fifty-eight.
Wow.
What he is is that.
Sixty-three, four, right?
Nobody?
Sixty-four? Is that right?
Yep.
Close to it. Yep. Well, thank you for your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next on appointments, we have Kristen Costa, LA Associates Inc., regarding local initiative program application for local action units for five affordable housing units, units at 168 Lowell Street. Ms. Costa, hi, welcome.
Kristen Costa with LA Associates, representing the developer for 168 Lowell Street. I am, um, was hired as the affordable housing consultant for the project. The project was, um, well, it consists of thirty, excuse me, thirty-six townhouse condominium units, served by a private way. It was approved through the town planning board under the multifamily and, as well as the inclusionary zoning housing bylaws, okay? The inclusionary bylaw includes five, um, a number of affordable units, in, in our case, it's five. So there will be five affordable units in the, um, project that will be awarded through lottery, I'll, I'll be doing, handling that. Um, and likely three of those units will be local preference, we're, we're working on that. But as, um, in order for the units to, the affordable units to be counted toward the town's SHI or subsidized housing inventory, the state requires, um, a local initiative program, local action unit application. So whenever a town has an inclusionary bylaw such as this, rather than a forty B process, it goes through this local action unit process, much simpler. And that application is, requires the endorsement of the, this board. So that's why I'm here, hoping to, to get that, so we can file with the state.
Good, I'll open it up to the, um, the board here, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you very much for being here. Um, just a quick question in terms of, in general, do you have any idea when these units may come online, anticipated?
Um, the, all right, so I believe, I'm, I'm not familiar with the market rate units per se, okay, because I'm, I'm just doing the affordables. But I believe the first affordable unit is projected to be ready at, um, this fall. So in that case, I back up from there, sixty days to market, that kind of thing, and I'd be starting to advertise for, for the lottery. Late spring, early summer? Estimate right now, you know? So.
What kind of units will the affordable units be, how many bedrooms with the?
Same, same as the market rate, yeah, they're all two-bedroom.
Okay, great.
Two-and-a-half bath, or really one full, one three-quarter, one half. But they have three levels, you know, the basement, which is really ground level, has a, one car garage, um, and, and it's finished, tell, you know, TV room, this kind of thing, half bath. Uh, first floor is your living kitchen, um, half bath, and then two bedrooms on the second, um, the master has a three-quarter, and then the other has a, a full bath. So they're all the, all the same, the affordability and the market rates.
Great.
As far as, you know, rooms and that kind of thing, some of the finishes might not be exact, exactly the same, but, but they, you know, yeah.
You said there were five affordable units?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, this package is very well put together. Um, just for the public's benefit, if someone was interested in one of those affordable units and wanted to know how to even go about getting into a lottery or even being considered, what do you recommend that they do?
Call me, yeah, they can just call me.
Would be on the town, is it going to be on the town's website in some capacity if someone wanted?
The application will be, but if they had questions ahead of time, because I'm, we're not marketing quite yet.
Okay.
The units won't be ready, we don't want to do it too soon, because then, you know. Um, but if people are curious as to whether, you know, what the process is, or just, you know, in general, do you think I'd qualify this kind of thing?
Okay.
They're welcome to call me. My, my numbers are on everything mostly, but the town has it for sure.
Okay.
You know, that way they know, you know, and I can also help them understand how to find other units, not just ones, you know, these.
Ones that one's taken with us, okay.
Resales, you know, this kind of thing, so, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I guess it's worth noting that these, um, three of those units are for preference for Wilmington residents, is that correct?
Yes, likely that'll be the case, yeah, that part of the application is, um, a demonstration by the, um, by the town, actually by Valerie, um, to request that three of them be set aside for local preference, and that will likely happen, for sure, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll offer a motion if you'll, thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the local initiative program application for local action units for five affordable housing units at 168 Lowell Street. Second.
All in favor? Approved. Thank you very much. Have a good night. All right, uh, now we will go on to communications. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have one more appointment, Board of Selectmen Discussion, review of proposed town meeting warrant.
So the, uh, town meeting warrant, uh, I'll go through it, um, very quickly, as you know, it, uh, we went through it at the last meeting. Uh, there were a couple of, um, changes, you'll recall, there was an article previously, uh, proposed with respect to, um, considering, um, ballot questions, that was, uh, removed, and also there was a, an article, um, with regard to the Lowell Street property, but upon further review, uh, consultation with town council, because it had been previously approved, it did not need to reappear. So those two articles have been, uh, removed from the warrant. So there are a total of fifty-four articles, two of which are petition articles. Uh, and if, um, if you'd like, I can go through them again real quickly. Uh, the, Article one, of course, is the elections, Article two is, uh, or?
I don't think each people will.
No?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so it is, uh?
Yeah.
I do have a question, if I could, Madam Chair, just, on last meeting you had mentioned that there were going to be additional add-ons, yeah, I, I don't feel it necessary to, uh, I agree with the chair, we don't have to read every single one verbatim tonight, but you said, you had mentioned that the bylaw committee was going to add on.
Yes.
Let us know which ones those were.
That's, uh, correct, so, uh, the bylaw committee has two articles, uh, which are Articles forty-four and Article forty-five. Uh, in the case of forty-four, to see if the town will vote to amend the inhabitant bylaws, to renumber and re-caption the inhabitant bylaws by assigning a, a character, or a chapter, uh, slash article number to each of the inhabitant bylaws, renumbering each section of each bylaw accordingly, inserting chapter, article, section, and subsection title, and updating internal references to reflect the new numbering system. Uh, all is set forth in the final draft of the code of the town of Wilmington dated February two thousand twenty-two. Uh, on file with the town clerk, or take any other action relative thereto. And then Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote to amend the inhabitant bylaws, to make clerical and substantive revisions fully set forth in a document titled, "Inhabitant Bylaws: General Revisions," uh, in the final draft of the code of the town of Wilmington dated February two thousand twenty-two. Uh, both as on file with the town clerk, take any action relative thereto.
Thank you, madam.
You do have note that it's misnumbered in here?
Uh, yes, uh, so the, the, I did pick that up over the weekend, and, and the version that the, uh, selectman will be signing or asked to sign this evening has the correct numbering. We, I think we left out number forty-four in the version you have.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, it goes forty-three to forty-five.
Right.
Verbiage is right, but just the number.
Yes.
It'll be renumbered, so it should actually end, um, fifty-three, it looks like, right?
Uh, yeah.
Is that right?
Fifty-three or fifty-four.
Right now it's fifty-four, but if, with the renumbering, then it's.
Three.
Okay, any further discussion, question? Okay, do I have a motion? Do we need a motion for that? There's just a review.
A motion to sign.
Yeah, to sign it.
I'll make a motion that we sign the corrected, um, warrant with the correct number on it.
Yes, you either take it up now or under.
Yeah, it is item seven, so, let's just take it up now, since it's here. Thank you, Ms. Selectman Vettel.
So the Selectman Department made a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? So moved.
I'll just have the warrants available after the meeting for the board to sign.
You heard that there was a question.
Now we will move on to communications, Mr. Howell.
Uh, so under communications, uh, the, uh, first item is a letter to Steve Poftek, the MBTA, uh, general manager. Uh, just to summarize, essentially this letter, uh, is a recap of, uh, the incidents that have taken place, uh, in Wilmington, uh, since January twenty-first, with regard to the train accident, noted efforts of the legislative delegation, town officials to, um, engage in some productive communication. Uh, there was some very limited, uh, communication over the past several weeks, uh, from the MBTA, and some of it seemed to be somewhat contradictory. Also raised questions about the explanation for the malfunctions, uh, which are, have been suggested to be, uh, sensors in the tracks that are impacted by snow and ice. Uh, and then we're seeking a commitment, uh, to keep us informed and also to, to direct resources to resolve the problem. Uh, next on the communication is a memo from me to the board with regard to, uh, a, uh, conversation we had via Zoom with our legislative delegation and the MBTA representatives. Uh, this session was dated March eighth, uh, involves Steve Poftek, the general manager, and several of his, uh, staff, uh, our legislative delegation, uh, also Chair Misselli and, uh, select person, uh, O'Connell. Uh, the MBTA continues to, uh, suggest that the crossing gates, uh, are impacted by a, a mix of, uh, snow and salt, uh, getting on the tracks and impacting their sensors. You know, we had, quite honestly, some question about that in light of the fact that this seems to be, uh, just occurring this year as opposed to prior years. Uh, there was an agreement reached that they would, uh, review the particulars in terms of the reported incidents, and that we would, um, uh, reconvene in two weeks, and that that would continue for a period of time. Uh, there is also, uh, an expectation going forward that they would, uh, appear before the Board of Selectmen, so that the full board can have an understanding of, uh, what is happening here. Uh, next is a memo from, uh, town clerk Beth Lawrenson regarding the, uh, state approval for changes to voting precincts. Uh, she notes that the voting precincts, um, uh, were changed as a result of the two thousand twenty federal census. Uh, she had, had worked with Tony LaVerde, our GIS manager, uh, to determine how best to minimize the impact. Uh, as you were, was noted earlier, uh, there needs to be, uh, four thousand, or not more than four thousand, uh, residents per precinct. Ultimately, uh, when all was said and done, and the, uh, board signed off on the redistricting, uh, there were one thousand ninety-four, um, residents that were affected by the change in precincts, and of those, two hundred and three will actually see a change in their polling location. Postcards will be issued, uh, to the affected households, the intention is to ensure that residents are aware of, of their new polling locations. This is also, uh, going out via social media. Uh, next under correspondence is a memo from Selectman Kyra with regard to a status on the town school admin project.
You want me to, uh, report, uh, on Wednesday, March second, the town and school administration, but they're getting that, uh, just a further reviewing, um, of the offices. At that meeting, uh, Phil O'Brien from Townsend Rockets Associates was, was there along with Dan Pilato, the opening, uh, meeting. Uh, Mr. O'Brien walked the committee through the interior setup of the offices and the spaces of the town and school. Uh, he presented two options, referencing them as scheme A three and scheme A. Uh, each op, uh, option, um, consists of three floors. Uh, one of the schemes had a, a wider and lower look, and the other was longer and taller. Part of the, um, look of the, um, interior was that, um, one shows, um, the offices. Part of the look of the interior was that one shows the offices all together with a long counter. That was Scheme A3, and then Scheme D showed that the offices were... had shorter counters. And I think that the group liked the... some of the concept of the second of Scheme D, and Mr. O'Brien's going to go back and do another setup for us. He also had the hearing rooms and the selectmen rooms situated so that WC TV studio would be between both of them, making it easier for them to conduct live broadcasts. Also, it's noted that the school administration and votes scheme is located on the third And one thing that Mr. Hall brought up was possibly moving six individuals from the Public Works Administration Personnel Department over to the new town hall, getting them out of the grounds crossing the public station area of Nando Street. And the other suggestion was to look at the possibility of, is their room over at the current highway garage area for them to be located? That's something that Mr. O'Brien is going to investigate and try to work in those individuals into the new town hall. As for the parking, it's noted that there's only three hundred different spaces mentioned accommodating students from Wilmington High School. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 16th. Mr. Hall, would you can add to that if you think I missed something?
No, I think that covers the highlights.
Thank you.
Next is a memo from Mark Di Giovanni, Chair of the Ice Rink and Recreation Committee, an update on the efforts to establish an ice rink and recreation facility. And he notes that the objective of the group has been to secure a facility for ice skating use, either via a publicly funded arrangement or a public-private partnership. They've reviewed multiple sites throughout town, and the current sites that the committee is focused on are either the Whitfield School Site on Middlesex Ave, the Town Recycling Center or Composting Center area, which is down in South Wilmington on Main Street, Grove Ave, property that I believe used to be the DAV property right near the lake, and then the Town Park Area, which again is off of Route 38. He notes that they conducted a survey in the summer of 2021, asking residents about their satisfaction with access to indoor and outdoor venues for recreational purposes. They collected 950 responses, and they are expecting to issue a follow-up survey soon to gather further information. And they also are continuing to check in with Richard Galant, who is the current owner of the Restuccia Rink, to understand what his current plans are, if they've changed at all with respect to the rink. Next, under correspondence, is a letter from Curtis Wood, the Secretary of the Executive Office of Technology Services and Security. Once again, the town, through the efforts of John O'Neill, is receiving a grant for participation in this cybersecurity awareness program. This will be our third year involved in that, where employees are provided with information on trying to avoid some of the phishing and other intrusions on our systems, and so that will continue again this year. Next, under correspondence, is an invitation from Mike Tintendo, President of Wilmington Little League, to attend and participate in the 2022 Opening Day Parade and ceremonies, which will be on April 16th.
Madam Chair, if I may just give you to the manager. It says in parentheses, it says that the parade starts at 9:30, and then it says in parentheses, they still need to confirm with Wilmington, please. When that's confirmed, can Bev you just send out a note to us, just confirming the time, so that we make sure that we're all there when we're supposed to be there? Please. Thank you.
And then, under correspondence, we have communication from Catherine Maloney from Xfinity with regard to program changes, and a... in their lineup, and a similar communication from Nell Connors from Verizon with respect And then, with respect to Board to Consider, the first two items, the initiative petition and the signing of the warrant, have been previously approved. Third item is a request of Elizabeth Laurinson, town clerk, to designate the Town of Wilmington website as the official posting location for meeting notices and agendas. This has been a discussion that we've had for some time right now. Our official posting location is the bulletin board here at the town hall. There was some measure of concern about using the website as... for fear that the... if the website goes down, then meetings would have to be canceled and reposted. We've had some conversations with John O'Neill. While that does remain a possibility, it's... I think it's fairly unlikely that that would happen, and there's a provision that would require, in order for us to repost, the website would have to be down, I believe, in excess of six hours. Clearly, the advantage of having the website as the official posting location is it's accessible 24/7, whereas the town hall, it's only accessible during business hours. So it's town clerk's recommendation. I certainly agree that the town authorize the town's website to serve as our official posting location for meetings.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we designate the town website as the official posting location for meeting notices and agendas.
Thank you. Second, all in favor? Any discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
I'm not opposed to this one, just preface that, but would we still be doing the manual posting out there as well as a visual for anybody that doesn't... isn't computer-based? So that won't change?
Yeah.
You're just designating this as just considered the official record, if you will, legally?
Yes.
Will we still do that? Fine. Yeah, like I said, I'm opposed to this one, may I ask?
All in favor? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is the executing the electric vehicle supply equipment license agreement with Reading Municipal Light. You'll recall, there's been some considerable discussion about this over the last few months. Reading Municipal Light has designated or obtained a grant through the state to establish these electric charging stations. They have three, I believe, three in Reading and two designated for Wilmington. One of the elements of that is to establish a license agreement, which basically authorizes RMLD to set up these charging stations at locations in Wilmington, one being out here at Glen Road, the other being at the library. We wanted to have town council review the agreement, but given the fact that KP Law represents RMLD, we sought separate counsel. Petrinian Associates was involved in review of the license, this license agreement, and there was... last week, we had a conference call, reviewed it, and ultimately recommended... council recommended that the agreement is such that the board should sign it. It's a 15-year agreement. Upon the conclusion of that agreement, there would be annual one-year renewals unless either party wishes to discontinue. There's also provisions in there that would allow for discontinuance earlier than that if it's so deemed.
Any discussion?
Just one question. I was under the impression that each location in Wilmington, you'd be able to have... they would have two charging ports.
That's...
I believe that's right.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I was just reading it, it was saying one and...
I think one location.
One location. Yeah, I didn't see the two. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second? Any further discussion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, so moved.
Okay, the next is a Board to Consider Request of Wilmington Using Wilmington Town Common to be Illuminated Blue During the Month of April in Observance of Autism Awareness.
Make a motion to grant the request?
Second? All in favor? Approved.
Also, under Board to Consider, is a request of Will Doucette, who's the president of the Junior WOW Club, and is asking to use the town common on Saturday, April 16, from at 2:00 PM for the Easter egg hunt. As you know, this had historically been done by the Recreation Department, and this group has generously agreed to take this on.
Okay. Any questions? Are there any recommendations at all, Jeff? I mean, that's the same... I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just saying it's the same day as the Little League is happening right before that. Do you get recommendations from police and fire and DPW when you have multiple things going on? I assume yes.
I do. There hasn't been any objection. I think clearly the parade will be cleared out well before that, and the games will be on.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Approved.
Next is a request, the parents of Wilmington High School senior to use the town common on Friday, May 13, 4:30 PM, to have a promenade for the high school seniors.
Move to grant the request?
Any discussion? Do I have a second? All in favor? So moved.
And then, last Board to Consider is a request of John Romano, on behalf of the Wilmington Sons of Italy, to use the municipal parking lot at the Fourth of July Building on Saturday, April 9, 2022, and Sunday, April 10, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM for a drive-through diaper donation.
Motion?
Second. Accept.
Oh, okay.
All in favor? Okay, so moved. Okay, we will now open it up to public comments. Do we have any public comments? Please stand and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin McDonald, 140 Andover Street. I'm glad you're here today.
Can you just repeat your address, please, Mr. McDonald?
140 Andover Street.
140 Andover Street. Thank you. Go ahead.
I read Mr. Hall's letter to the MBTA. It was posted online, and I rise to just say this, that I think the letter falls short, and it doesn't go far enough to accomplish the safety and service remedy. And I have two items that I'd like the manager to include in his letter, if he's willing to amend it. And there was nothing mentioned about having the North Wilmington train heading inbound to stop at all crossing times. And I bring that up because the people of Wilmington pay over $500,000 a year to have two train stations in Wilmington. And I know some people that have to actually take their vehicle to Boston because the train doesn't stop at all stations, at all crossing times. And if the... I mentioned this several years ago, and it's still... it was never implemented. However, if it was implemented, that train would have been stopped the night of that accident. And if the train had have been stopped on the night of that fatal accident, the engineer would have been able to see that the arms were knocked down and the lights were not on, and a life would have been saved. So that's one point there. The other thing I'd like to mention is because there's been some issues about the train blocking Route 62. 100% that does not have to happen, and it's a very, very simple solution to that. And that is to have the people boarding the train north of North Wilmington to be mandated to get on the passenger car, which is the first passenger car behind the engine. And if that's the case, the train wouldn't have to block the road. And in fact, I actually took the train from Lawrence to North Wilmington and asked the conductor, "I'd like to get off at North Wilmington, and would you please allow me to get off in such a manner that the train doesn't have to block Route 62?" And he said, "Okay, what you have to do is you have to walk down to the first car and get off on the first car," which he may have been, and which I did do. It's such a simple remedy to this problem that would keep emergency vehicles from being impeded when the arms are down. And if there's a failure of mechanical safety equipment, the conductor and the engineer would be able to have both their eyes on this situation. And efficient to that, I'm asking the board to go a step further and to have the police have train schedules in all the police vehicles in all the precincts, and have them, at the current time at least, at minimum, be at those crossing points in Wilmington where there's been a severe failure on mechanical equipment. So that's the first thing that I wanted to mention to you. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is the public building projects that are being proposed, and I didn't make it into the special town meeting when they were voting on the feasibility study of $1.2 million. And $1.2 million is a lot to spend on a feasibility study on a building that likely is probably going to be knocked down or have a lot of money for asbestos removal. And I wanted to point out that back in 1972, the Town of Wilmington took land on Salem Street specifically for the purpose of building a school.
Ms. McDonald, I'm just going to stop you there. I mean, we will take your MBTA suggestions under advisement, but I don't think this is the right platform to talk to... this is better well-served at a meeting for that...
Would you be willing to put an agenda item on next meeting?
That's not the way we work, agenda items, Mr. McDonald.
Which is actually on the agenda tonight.
What was that?
Part of the agenda tonight, a part of the meeting, is pertaining to a hockey rink. And I think hockey rink is related to recreation and education, and I had a proposal to accomplish both, and it was to simply...
I think you should submit that proposal, though. We don't have anybody here to speak to that, other than, you know, there's many, many of these town meetings for all these buildings. I'll give you two more minutes.
Two minutes. Instead of spending the money on the Wildwood site...
That's already been approved.
You can change it.
Well, we're not going to. That was approved at town meeting the other night.
You could take that site on Salem Street. When you take land by eminent domain, it specifically has to be used for that purpose. You can't go build something else there when it was taken for a school. Now, when you're talking about rinks, you could build the infrastructure into that site for a school and still be able to have rinks in there that are part of the education. And you could have private industry fund it, so you accomplish two rinks funded by private industry, run by private industry. It addresses a need in town, okay? You take land that was specifically taken for a school, and you actually build a school there, and you help fund it by selling the Wildwood site. And then you don't have to pay for asbestos, and you don't have to pay to knock it down, and the $1.2 million actually goes to something that makes sense.
Okay, well, the residents of Wilmington... Okay, well, the residents of Wilmington think it makes sense. They voted pretty much unanimously, so Mr. Hall, go ahead.
First of all, the MSBA program, if we are going to continue in the MSBA pro, MSBA program, which it provides financial assistance in terms of the cost of a school, we have to play by their rules. And one of their rules is that we raise and appropriate funds for a feasibility study. So if the town had not taken that action, then we would have checked out of the MSBA program, and we would be funding whatever happened with the new school, fully on the town's dime. So, you know, I think it just makes sense to pursue additional assistance from the state, and they, they require a feasibility study.
They would still be able to do it on that site, Mr. Hall. You just have to redo the paperwork and put it for that site that makes sense.
Kevin, this has been going on for years, okay? This is not a simple, we won the lottery and do this.
I know, but there's a lot of things that don't make sense, and you're looking at the people
Are you going to these meetings?
Especially at 140 and
I tried to go to the town meeting, and you apparently didn't have enough people to check in
Those are the meetings we used to be bringing this up. This is not the forum for that.
Because there were like hundreds of people who waited an hour and a half to get checked in, so there was an insufficient amount of registration at the meeting.
Do you have anything for us to add? Because I'm not going to contain this any longer. You've taken too much time.
Some federal programs to fund senior housing, and one of the items in town is that the people want a senior center. And I'm proposing that we have HUD fund senior housing
Mr. McDonald, I'm going to cut you off right here, because I'm personally losing patience with you.
And build a senior center right along with the senior housing.
You need to attend those meetings.
I would suggest you have an agenda item.
This is closed. We're going to move on to next items.
You set the agenda. You set the agenda.
Our next item is announcements. Are there any announcements?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you, Ms. O'Connell and Mr. Hall, you know, based on what I've read in the memos earlier this evening, and this past weekend, it sounds like you guys have been very busy advocating for the town's residents with the MBTA. They know that must have been in the meeting last week, but certainly really appreciate your efforts, a lot of time and effort, one of those calls and meetings. I do want to congratulate the boys and girls of Wilmington Travel Basketball, and their coaches just finished up another successful season, so congratulations to them and all the coaches and the board members, especially Joe Myel and Joe Langone, who worked tirelessly all year long for that. And lastly, another congratulations to the kids from the, the middle school kids from the Banta Minor, upper gold champions, the Eastern Hockey. They, they won the championship this past weekend, and, and as we round out the winter sports season, congratulations to all the student athletes who participated.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Congratulations to all of the student athletes. Great job. Any further announcements?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you and Town Mayor Jeff Hall and John O'Neil for accommodating me to vacation to take part in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for making the time to attend. We appreciate it. Okay, any new business? Okay, we'll move on to important dates.
Tomorrow evening, March, March 15th is the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing, Town Hall, 7:00 PM in the auditorium. March 16th, the Town School Administration Building Committee Meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. March 23rd, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. March 24, the Economic Development Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. March 28 is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting. April 1st is the last date a registered to vote in the annual town elections and town, annual town meeting. Town Clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM. April 2nd, Rabies Clinic, Public Buildings Department, noon to 2:00 PM. April 6, a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also, April 6 is another Town School Admin Building Committee Meeting, Room 9, 6:00 PM. April 9 is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 11 is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM. April 13, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 13, the Senior Center Building Committee Meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. April 16, Little League Opening Day Parade. Also, April 16, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 18, Town Office is closed for Patriots Day. April 20, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 20, Town School Admin Building Committee Meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. April 23, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 23 is the annual town elections, polls open at 8:00, and will close at 8:00 PM. April 25 is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. April 27, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 27, another Senior Center Building Committee Meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. April 30 is the annual town meeting, High School Auditorium, 9:00 AM. April 30 is the brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We note on the agenda here that the hazardous waste day was slated to be May 7. We just received notice the end of last week from the outfit that does this Clean Harbors, that that date is no longer going to be available. And the earliest date we have, and we've scheduled, is for July 30. So July 30, Household Hazardous Waste Day, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, West Intermediate School Parking Lot.
Thanks, Mr. Hall. Now, we will go to salute to service. Selectman Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, it's my privilege to present tonight's salute to service to Christopher S. Elliott. Mr. Elliott served and joined the US Army in 2006. He was deployed to Afghanistan from 2011 to 2012, where he served in Operation Enduring Freedom. During that time, served admirably and earned two Army Achievement Medals, National Defense Service Medal, and NATO Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal with two campaign stars, and the Overseas Service Ribbon as well. Mr. Elliott serves on the Wilmington Fire Department, and previously the Dispatch Department before that. And so for these reasons, for his service to our country and to our community, we salute him. Thank you for your service, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. That will conclude our agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you.